Okay, I'm Ms. Kuzak. Are we ready to go?
Before we start, do we want to let in the other two attendees at this time?
Oh, sorry, I was muted there. They can hear what's going on from where they are. And when it's their turn to speak, then I will, I'll prompt them.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. So we're good to go then?
We're good to go, yeah.
Great, thank you, Ms. Kuzak. All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'm Mayor Val Vanenburg, and I'd like to call the December 7, 2020 public hearing to order and begin by acknowledging that the land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Kekete, Quatlin, Masquee, and Semiamu First Nations. So introductions tonight. Again, I'm Mayor Val Vanenburg. With me, I have Councillor Rudy Stortaboom, Councillor Rosemary Wallace, Councillor Gail Martin, Councillor Terry James, Councillor Nathan Bahall, and Councillor Paul Albrecht. And for staff tonight with us, I have Kelly Kenny, our Corporate Officer, Frances Chung, our Chief Administrative Officer, Darren Light, our Director of Corporate Services, Carl Johansson, our Director of Development Services, Rick Baumhoff, our Director of Engineering, Parks, and Environment, Kim Hilton, our Director of Engineering, or sorry, Recreation, Culture, and Community Services, and Scott Kennedy, our Acting Fire Chief. So, called to order, this public hearing is being convened pursuant to Section 464 of the Local Government Act in order to consider Bylaw 3142 zoning amendment by law and development permit number 04-20 to rezone properties located at 2022256 Avenue and 20237 Michaud Crescent to accommodate a six-story, 213-unit rental apartment development and associated Michaud Park Community Garden expansion. Bylaw 3143 discharge of land use contract number 04-75 to authorize the discharge of land use contract number 04-75 from the property located at 2022256 Avenue and 20237 Michaud Crescent. I would like to thank everyone for attending this public hearing, which is taking place by electronic means via Zoom. If we encounter technical challenges during this meeting, please stand by, as we want to ensure everyone who wishes to speak is afforded the opportunity to do so. This public hearing is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and is also being recorded and will be posted on the city's website. If you are watching and wish to attend this electronic meeting, you can go to www.langleycity.ca to register and join the meeting. At this public hearing, those in attendance who believe that their interest in property is affected by the proposed bylaw will be allowed to make representations to council and shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard respecting matters contained respecting matters contained in the bylaw. Once in the meeting, you may use your raise hand function to indicate your wish to speak, which will automatically put you in the speaker queue. You'll be invited to speak in the order in which hands are raised. When it's your turn to speak, staff will prompt you with a message asking you to unmute your microphone, and you may begin speaking. Please commence your comments to council by clearly stating your name and street address. Unit numbers are not required. Then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the bylaw. Your name, address, and comments will form part of the record of this public hearing. Members of council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main function of council members this evening is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Once you've completed your comments, staff will mute your microphone. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making their views heard. I am asking that you keep your comments to no more than five minutes to allow everyone who wishes to speak an opportunity to do so. Once everyone who wishes to speak has done so, I will call for speakers for a second time, at which time, those who wish to speak again should indicate so by raising, by using the raise hand function. I will then call for speakers for a third and final time. If there are no speakers, I will ask for a motion to close the public hearing. The public was also given the opportunity to provide written submissions for this public hearing. All submissions will be retained by the corporate officer, and copies of the submissions will be available from her on requests following the hearing and shall form part of the public record of these proceedings. Ms. Kenny, can you please advise how notification was provided for this public hearing and whether we have received any correspondence?
Yes, Madam Mayor. A notice pertaining to the bylaws was mailed to properties within 100 meters of the subject properties. Newspaper advertisements are placed in the November 26th and December 3rd editions of the Langley Advanced Times, and a notice was placed outside of the entrance to City Hall and on the city's website. And there have been six pieces of correspondence received regarding the bylaws, and they were forwarded to council via email.
Great, thank you. And I see that we're having issues. Sorry, I'm just gonna stop right here. I believe council members are having issues with the video.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I've been trying to correct that, but I believe it may have to do with their sign-in method, and it's not something that I can correct from here with the meeting.
Do we have to have the videos on for the meeting to go ahead, or is that fine?
No, it can function. I'm not sure if they can speak yet. I haven't, we haven't tested that yet, so I should be able to unmute them. That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so, bylaw 3142 zoning amendment by law and development permit number 04-20. Mr. Johansson, I believe you're going to be presenting the proposed bylaw. And I'm wondering if Mr. Johansson cannot unmute himself as well.
Madam Mayor, perhaps we could take a quick recess, and we will see if we can rectify the matter.
Okay, oh, I see.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Would you like me to proceed, Madam Mayor?
Ms. Kenny, did you want to stop and try to get everybody on board first, or would you like to proceed?
I'm just wondering if all council members are having the same issue or not being able to turn their video on or their mic?
Okay, if you guys, if everyone could maybe put in the chat box whether they can see the video or use their video.
Well, perhaps we should just take a quick recess and we'll figure this out, and then we can resume?
Sure, I think that might be a good idea.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Johansson, I will hand it back over to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council, and members of our Zoom audience. Can you hear me okay? All right, so I'll provide a brief introduction to the proposed redevelopment of the West Countryan site and related expansion of the Michaud Park Community Garden. This proposal includes a six-story residential building with 213 rental units, and if approved by council, would create an attractive new building along a key downtown gateway street that also includes a below-market rental component, all with an easy walk of downtown frequent transit and a future 203 Streets Skytrain Station. The applicant is also proposing a land exchange. It involves exchanging a strip of land on the east side of the city-owned community garden property with an equal portion of the applicant's property. This in turn would create a pedestrian and vehicular access between the applicant's property and Michaud Crescent, while also enabling the expansion of the community garden. While the applicant's property is already zoned for high-density development and would only require a council-issued development permit to proceed, this proposed rezoning and land exchange will enable access to the property from both 56 Avenue and Michaud Crescent, which will help to distribute traffic and will improve fire access to this development and the block in general. I also note the strip of land that is proposed to become the new access lane is currently covered by a public access easement and is not used for community garden space. The proposed land exchange will also create a community benefit by expanding the community garden area and adding 11 more garden plots to the current 18 on-site, plus an additional six plots off-site. The applicant is also proposing variances, including those to resident and visitor parking. The proposed residential parking reduction reflects the rental tenure of the project. It's consistent with what is being considered with the new zoning bylaw, and it reflects the project's close proximity to downtown, high-frequency transit, and the future Skytrain station. The city is working to update the official community plan and zoning bylaw to modernize land uses and bylaw requirements to better reflect existing conditions and prepare for Skytrain. It is estimated that updated parking rates in a new zoning bylaw, subject to council approval, and depending on location, could be between 10% to 20% lower than what they are today in the current bylaw. I also note that while the proposed visitor parking variance is higher than what the applicant's traffic engineer has recommended, it is something that staff can support prior to changes to our zoning bylaw. The proposed new building has been designed to minimize visual impacts to neighboring properties and features a high-quality building site design and strong pedestrian orientation. I also know that traffic calming measures will be incorporated into the design and construction of the through lane in order to discourage shortcuts and ensure traffic slows as it approaches the 56 and Michaud intersections. And that will be undertaken as part of the servicing agreement process for this application. The application was received positively by the advisory design panel, and the applicant has incorporated the recommendation of the panel into their application. Thank you for the opportunity to provide this overview.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johansson. So now I'd like to invite the applicant, Mr. Kevin Hustin, Vice President Development, Penny Farthing, Langley City Properties, LTD, to speak to the proposed bylaw and development permit applications. So I will hand it over to you. Thank you, Mr. Hustin.
Hi, good evening. Appreciate you guys looking through this application for us tonight. I'm gonna quickly turn it over to our architecture team from Keystone for them to run you through the development. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, and good evening, everyone. This is Joanna Misick, and with me, sorry, I'm the project coordinator, and with me is Stephen Bartok. He's the architect of Broward. And we're from Keystone Architecture, so I'm gonna share the screen quickly.
No, you weren't sharing this, so stop sharing.
Oh, oops.
Yeah, you have the brown one. So hit your screen.
Uh huh.
And you're gonna see it's right there.
Okay, I got you.
It's like a full year.
There we go. So, oops, sorry. There we go. All right, so this development is Penny Farthing Apartment. It's 2022256 Avenue. It'll be a 213-unit, six-story residential development in the city of Langley, and that will be in the downtown commercial zone. So this is a context map showing you the five and the 10-minute walking radius. The proposed development is, sorry, I'm just gonna see if I can minimize that. Take that down. Does that work? How do I get rid of that?
You, for you, you won't be able to get rid of that, yeah.
I won't, eh? Okay. So, I can't make it smaller.
We'll move it over to the round.
You would?
Yeah, there you go. That's as far as you're getting it.
Okay.
You can hit the button on the top right. Sorry, I just wanted to.
Yeah, that's good.
We have, we have the view of everybody, and we can't see our.
I know, I know.
So we hit that, yeah, hit that button. There you go.
Oh, that's a lot better. Okay. Sorry about that, guys. This is a context map, just five minutes and 10-minute walking radius. This site is indicated by the stars. So you can see within five-minute walking radius, you have the library, the City Hall, you have Fraser Highway, you have a park, and within 10-minute radius, there's a recreation center, community school. This is the same type context map, just showing you the site in relation to the transit that's within five and 10-minute walking radius. So you can see within five minutes that the site is located, what will be the future rapid transit station, as well as the transit exchange. This is a context aerial view showing you the site. So this is the building mass right there. That's 56 Avenue and Michaud, and it just gives you an idea of how the building mass, very narrow and long site, fits into the context, surrounding context. This is the site plan. North is to the left, so that's 56 Avenue. You can see to the east, where you have the proposed accessway. To the south, you have the existing community garden with the additional plots shown there and that little land swap that we are doing. You can see the building has north side, south side, divided by firewall. You access the building towards the east side, two entrances and a parquet ramp along that side as well. This is just, I'm not gonna talk a lot about this slide, but it's just the land swap. So we have a road dedication at 56, and then we have, we're giving back that little blue portion to the community garden, integrating it into that. Here are shadow studies. So at the top, you have March, and then at the bottom, June at 10:00 AM, noon in the middle, and then 2:00 PM to the right. This is just a plan and elevation of the massing strategy for the proposed site and building. So in plan, it's a very shallow U-shaped building footprint. The west side of the parcade up here, it jobs. We were in anticipation to save, and we are retaining these trees to the west and as well as these trees along the east side. You can see the community garden to the south, 56 to the north. The balcony units are partially recessed. At 56, we have the projecting stairs that provide massing articulation and detail, and it kind of, it connects the building to the pedestrian way that's going to be put in here. And then in elevation, we, the building is raised a half a story above the ground. There's strong central amenity on the east side. The entries break the horizontal line to give it hierarchy. There's a two-level podium, and the four stories above, they're just an efficient form that articulates, that is articulated by projecting balconies and frames. The west side is a similar approach. We just show, those are all the existing trees that will almost mask the whole mass of that building to that adjacent residential property. These are floor plans. The two-level parcade, the bottom level of the parcade is tenant parking. We have visitor parking. At P1 level, that's where the garbage and the recycling will also be located. The parking stats, Carl briefly touched on this, with the proximité transit and the other the factor that we're using for, what was that? That was the parking. We're providing 15 less cars, which that'll just reduce the greenhouse effect. This is a program breakdown of the site. So you see, at 56 Avenue, we have ground-oriented units, which provide front door access. We're providing outdoor amenity along with indoor amenity. We have both a central amenity, as long with other locations on the first floor, and then we have a sixth floor indoor amenity as well. The unit breakdown, you can see that we have accessible units, adaptable, as long with universal. This is the site plan. I'm just gonna flip through these site plans a little bit quickly. You see the amenity in the middle. Access the building from the east. The amenity continues on the second and the third, and has unit layouts on the remaining. Continues through the fourth level, the amenity. Fifth floor is all units. Sixth floor is all units, except for the southwest corner, which we have a sixth floor amenity. This plan addresses site security and SEPTED. There's a sense of community by connecting the building to the existing community garden to the south. There's natural access control. Now that we provided that access road that runs from 56 to Michaud, before it was kind of, you know, you couldn't access that through. It was kind of visitor road, is it not? So now it's clearly defined. There's natural surveillance with all the patios and the courtyards and the proposed landscaping and having the building raised up from the access road that clearly defines what is private and public space. This is just showing you where existing and future pedestrian cycle routes will be. So down in Michaud, there'll be proposed bicycle lane, and along 56, there's a shared user lane, and those two main intersections there towards the east side. Those are crossing improvements that will happen. These are just building sections that just show you the mass cut through. Now we get into the rendered exteriors. You see the north elevation, that's at 56. The south elevation, that's at the community garden at Michaud. East elevation, you really start to see that the strong podium with the amenity, the two entrances, and the west elevation, where we're retaining all those trees along that line. These are just the flat head-on elevation for reference. Some materiality, we're keeping it very simple. We have some stamped concrete. We're using a little bit of brick. We have some stone on the first two-level podiums. We are using, the rest is just gonna be hardy. We're gonna articulate it using different colors. And we're using a bit of seracot in there as well. So this, these are rendering shown from on the left-hand side. That is shown from Michaud, the, from the community garden. You can see the amenity space to the top-left corner, and on the right-hand side, you have a view from the proposed accessway, showing you how you enter the building, how it sits on the street. Here you have, on the left-hand side, top and left, you have a close-up of the ground-oriented units, shown from 56. And on the right side, you have the amenity, the sixth floor amenity. There is a shot from the exterior on the bottom and what you would see on the inside at the top right. Here is a streetscape. This is at 56, looking southwest, and how the building just sits within its context with the adjacent property to the, that would be the east. This is an aerial view. This is 56 right in the foreground, and then you can see the residential development to the right, and then the existing developments to the east. This is just another shot looking down that proposed accessway, giving you an idea of the retainage of those trees on that east side. This was just the study we did for that loading zone, just the sightlines, very basic. This, these are more, more rendered exteriors aerial shots. So this is from the southeast corner with the garden, the community garden in the foreground. This is another aerial shot from the northeast, northwest. And that's 56 in the foreground, showing you that shared lane right there with the trees and how we're retaining the trees towards the west side. This is an aerial view from the northeast side. 56 Avenue in the foreground, and we're showing you how we're retaining the trees across to the, to the east side. This is another shot from the southwest corner, showing you just the building, the amenity space, and those trees that are being retained. We are being environmentally sustainable through these points here. High reflective roof membrane, eliminating all surface parking and maximizing density. There's some energy performance that we're, we're gonna meet or exceed ashray. I'm not really gonna go through all these points. This is just a close-up of 56 Avenue of the ground-oriented units, how that mass kind of interacts with that, the pedestrian walkway. And this concludes our presentation, but I will pass it over to Meredith to talk about landscape.
Meredith, do you want us to just leave this sheet on, and you can speak to it, or do you want to bring?
That would be great. I'll be pretty quick, obviously, because this is all, we wanna just make sure that everybody has tenants to speak if they want to. So I'll do a quick render of the landscape. So if you can see where the community gardens are, there are the row of three rows that are longer. Those are the existing community gardens. There is a shorter row, double row. That is actually the newer ones that are being proposed. One row is outside of the property line. One row is inside the property line. There are some existing trees within this location, just notched inside where the new building proposed areas. There is, I believe, one to two trees being removed at that point. One, there was a question for that when we were at the ADP panel before. And so we have confirmed and actually have provided on the new set of plans that have been submitted, the arboretum cultural report and the existing trees on survey for that additional information. There was a question about that. There, one of, the few things that I did want to point out is the fact that there is actually a fairly substantial increase in tree material on the site, and they have been coordinated with the existing trees that are being retained, both on the west side, but also on the east side. From that one image that they were, the architects were showing earlier, when you're going down the lane, those retained trees on the neighboring east side property are actually fairly substantial and will provide a fairly significant amount of screening to this development and to the neighboring property. And actually, it will provide a fairly attractive and green walk surface, even though the walkway, our walkway, is against the road. It still actually will provide a very comfortable feeling and the sense of separation between fully public to semi-public to semi-private will still provide a really nice transition across the way that the landscape has been able to layer across. There are retaining walls. They've been maintained quite short on the street frontages, and then they have green areas, landscape areas that are in between, that layer up. So the existing amenity areas that are on the street frontage there, there have been separated into two different areas, active and passive, with children's play. Those will actually provide quite good natural surveillance of that center court area where other areas on both street frontage on 56 and on Michaud are actually gonna have quite good natural surveillance just due to the fact that on that frontage, we've got access points for the individual unit. So it really does provide a really good community engagement, both on 56, but also to the community garden space that's on Michaud, too. And that's gonna be quite an attractive addition and enlargement of that space. And then the users of this facility will really have a nice buffer of green planting that's on the second layer. It's on the podium level. But it will transition across. The people who are in the community gardens will feel separated and slightly private from the owners or the people who are in their patio spaces, but it still will allow for natural surveillance from the patio spaces on the upper level, looking down into the community garden space. The other thing that we did want to point out here, there were some comments from the ADP panel that we did receive earlier. Most of it, we're talking about the fact that we did want it to provide some additional visibility from the loading bay location. So the retaining walls have actually been chamfered back to allow a better access and view and corridor from people getting in and out of that truck. And then also, the landscape along the lane there, or this, consider a special paving treatment and traffic calming. We are going to be talking to the city about the best treatments that we could use along that center lane to ensure that there is both pedestrian safety and a slowdown of the traffic that goes through. And a slowdown of the traffic that goes through that area. There was a question from one of the ADP panel members. About ensuring that that is ultimately never going to be closed as per what. The city representative did speak is that there is no opportunity, there is a cross access agreement, there will be no gates, it will fully accessible from both sides for general public. And, and then the other thing we talked about is that there was potentially an increase of variety of landscape and planting material. And so we have actually revised the landscape, landscape plan to provide some more variety, both in the tree material and the shrub material. And these are all going to be selected based on the individual locations of where these trees and shrubs are based on both sunlight opportunities, shade, drainage, all of that kind of thing as well. But it will actually provide quite a green, both four seasons all the way through and a colorful. There's a multiple plant material that has flowers that have, you know, different colors foliage and textures and things like that to create, create quite a dynamic and green space for. And quite a benefit for this, this little, you know, a little bit of a narrow intersection, if you will, between fifty six and the community gardens. So that is primarily my very fast landscape presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Great, well, thank you both ladies. Mr. Huston, did you have anything to add before? We get to questions or anything or?
Uh, no, nothing really to add, just to, yeah, thank, thank the presenters and just express how excited we are about our projects and, and doing this building in, in the city Langley.
Yeah, well, thank you, Ms. Mitchell and Ms. Niznik. I didn't want to pronounce that, was that right?
You got it right.
Oh, good, thank you. No, that was a great presentation and I like that tree buffering in the gardens and everything, so, thank you. So Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise if there is anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to bylaw three one four two?
So we have three members of the public attending, however, none have indicated at this point. Oh, we have one that would like to speak now. I'm going to introduce Ms. Welch and allow her to talk if that's okay, Madam Mayor.
Perfect, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Welch.
Hi, thank you, everyone, for the opportunity to speak. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. And before you provide your comments, can you just please state your naming in the street you live on for the record, please?
It's Colette Welch and I live on, in twenty two hundred fifty six avenue, so right next door.
Excellent, thank you.
Great, thank you. First of all, I just wanted to say to the developer, I, I really appreciate all the work that they've done in proposing this idea. I think it's going to be great for the area and, and attract a lot more of what we want in our little community here. My issues is, is the size of the building and then the path at changing the garden. So first of all, the size of the building being the six stories. I am not too pointed that. When I first bought in two thousand and six in this area, I was told that Langley had a cap on the height of the buildings. And I feel that we're really veering away from that, even though this building may look great, it just seems like it's too tall for me. And also when you go to the side of our building with that. The building being that tall, I'm a little bit worried about the shadow and the effect it's going to have on our green space and our ability to grow stuff. And then some of the neighbors might have issues with any view of the mountains that they currently have. The second portion is the, the pathway, the roadway from, that goes on to Michard Gardens. I understand why it's proposed, but my concern is the increase in traffic in that road. And having, like, I walk down that road maybe three times a day and it's a really great walking area for everybody and their dogs and their kids. And I am concerned about the increase in traffic that would go on if that pathway was actually allowed. So that's my main concerns. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Mrs. Welch, for coming tonight and giving your comments. We appreciate it. Okay, Ms. Kuzak, is, call for a second time for speakers to bylaw three one four two.
Currently, no one is indicating that they would like to speak, although we have four in attendance now.
All right, and I'll call for a third and final time for speakers to bylaw three one four two.
If you are an attendee and you would like to speak, please hit the raise hand function. It doesn't look like anyone would like to speak.
Okay, so seeing no further speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw three one four two? Counselor Pahal, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and to the mayor, to maybe staff or the proponent. I was just curious, I'm happy that there was some language about the twenty percent of proposed units in the building to be below market with rents equal to thirty percent of the metro Vancouver median income. I was wondering, why was it the metro Vancouver median as opposed to, say, the Langley city medium? Is that a CMHC requirement?
Start my video here. Hi. I'll thank you for the question. I can take that one. So yes, that is right. So we are following the CMHC guidelines on those rents. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Pahal. Anybody else on council have any questions? See any hands? And I'm just checking the participant. I see no raised hands, so. No further questions from council? Seeing none? Perfect, we can move on to bylaw item B then. So bylaw three one four three, discharge of land use contract number zero four seven five. Mr. Johansson, I believe you want to present this one as well?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council and members of the Zoom audience. So this bylaw is to authorize the discharge of an existing land use contract on the property. And this existing land use contract allows for the uses for the West Country and the hotel, the restaurant and pub. And as a part of the proposal and also in being consistent with the province's initiative to terminate. All land use contracts in the province by two thousand and twenty four. This early termination of the land use contract would be necessary for the redevelopment of the site. Even though the property is zoned C one, which allows a maximum density of a hundred and fifty units per acre. And a maximum height of forty six meters or fifteen stories. Now, the land use contract on the property right now limits it to hotel, restaurant and pub. So in order for it to proceed for council to adopt or consider adoption of the rezoning bylaw, this land use contract would need to be discharged. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Johansson. Ms. Kuzak, can you please advise if there's anyone in attendance electronically at this meeting who wishes to speak to bylaw three one four three?
Thank you, we still have three in attendance, however, no one is indicating they would like to speak at this time.
Okay, so I'll call for a second time for speakers on bylaw three one four three, discharge of land use contract number zero four dash seven five.
No speakers, Madam Mayor.
And I will call for a third and final time for speakers on bylaw three one four three.
And nothing, thank you.
Great, so seeing no speakers, do any members of council have any questions regarding bylaw three one four three? Don't see any hands raised here and I don't see any on the screen. So can I have a member on secretary to close the public hearing, please? Sorry, Counselor James, Counselor Wallace, all those in favor, any opposed? The public hearing is closed. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, everyone.